Okay. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a rooty and justice for all.
Members' reports received and filed.
Yes, we have the treasure of May 2025 reconciliation reports.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I think there's a United Way golf tournament meeting after this meeting. I see a couple of courts here that are in charge of that. Saturday, the Moorage Foundation has a barbecue at Schultes, so you can go get your lunch. And then after that, you can go down to Taos. They have their Sky Fest and a car show at the Kentside Park. That's about all I've got going on. Last week and months usually a little slower.
Today, the Missouri State Tax Commission has a meeting at 1:30. I hope to be able to join them by Zoom. This afternoon, evening, Captain Kelly Fork retires from the J.C. Fire Department, which will be a nice event.
Twenty-eight years?
Almost. Not quite, I think. Wednesday, Mid-Mo Regional Planning Commission meeting in Ashland. And I've been invited to a Fourth Ward City meeting by the two council members from the Fourth Ward on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, Jeff Citi Chamber has a past chairman chairperson event. That's what I saw on my calendar. Thank you.
I will be here today for the golf tournament with Eric. Then I'm good till Friday. Our National Guard, ESGR, we're meeting Governor Kehoe tomorrow. Then in the afternoon, we are making a trip to St. James Winery to check out our 250th wine grapes made from the Knott vineyard. Saturday, I have a regional Navy meeting I'm hosting. And then the fireworks at Taos start at 3:00.
Oh, I think there've been fireworks at 3:00.
No, they're doing, but they have barbecue. They have all kinds of stuff. Then Saturday and Sunday, the Mid-Mo Amateur Radio Club Field Day takes place out at the Fairgrounds. And these are our PAM operators. And so they're actually our last line of communication if something would happen where Brian can't keep us up. And then Sunday is the Longmont Fireworks Festival. And old park flags, barbecue, and everything. That is all I have.
What does it mean to check out the wine?
Make sure it's palatable. Yeah, make sure.
How do you do that? Do you have scientific instruments for that?
Yes, it's called a glass. An eyeglass.
That's what I thought.
And then you, you.
Do you have a chauffeur?
Yeah, we actually do. We have Gary Under, which is kind of scary.
Okay, good enough.
But Sharon, Sharon's our host. So if you can't trust Sharon, who can you trust? Commission comments. Presentation from staff consultants and invited guests. We're gonna deviate from our agenda, and we are going to go with the presentation of the county's 2024 audit report by Williams Keepers. So. I think we're paying, are we paying you by the hour?
Not anymore. All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Amanda, and this is Ashley with Williams Keepers. We served as the audit partner and manager on the audit this year respectively. We will be going through or presenting our summary report. This is the finalized version. We went through a draft in quite a bit of detail with the commission last week in closed session. So these are finalized, and these are highlights from the audit reports that we issued as a result of our audit of the county's 2024 financial statements. I'll cover the financial statements in the single audit, and Ashley will cover the rest. For the audited financial statements, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements again this year. In our opinion, the financial statements of the county are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with GAAP, or Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. So sounding like a broken record, that is the best opinion that you can get. And it's the most important thing to the commission and to you all. And it means that the users of your financial statements can rely on them. We did prepare the financial statements again this year. It is a common practice for us as independent auditors to do so, but they were reviewed and approved by management before they were issued last week. We did use our judgment in determining how to audit the county again this year, although we've been working with you all for a number of years. We still perform a risk assessment process each year to determine where we need to focus our audit procedures. Just a reminder, the financial statements include two different sets of financial statements again this year. One are government-wide. That includes all of the county's funds, both governmental and proprietary, as well as any long-term asset liability balances. So everything the county is required to report in external audited financial statements are included in those government-wide financial statements. And those are followed by fund financial statements, which are separated into governmental and proprietary. And they provide a lot more detail about the county's individual funds. So their balances and transactions are presented there. On page two of the summary report, there's a table that summarizes the highlights from the government-wide financial statements, again, where everything is put together for the county as of and for the years that ended December 31st, 2024, with comparative information for 2023 and 2022. The financial statements themselves are not comparative, but if you check out the management's discussion and analysis that's referred to here in the summary report, that's on pages four through 17 in the audited financial statements, that part is comparative and discusses changes in the various categories that are presented in this summarized table. Probably goes into more detail than what's summarized here. You might notice that the 2023 and 2022 columns of this summarized table have asterisks that note they were not updated for restatements made during 2023 or 2022. Ashley will talk a little bit more in a minute about a new accounting standard that was applicable to the county this year and its implementation required restatements to prior years. So that's the summary here. And what's in the management's discussion and analysis have not been restated for those prior years that are presented. Moving on to the single audit, because the county spent more than $750,000, excuse me, of federal grant expenditures during the year. They met the threshold requiring a single audit again this year. Federal expenditures totaled about $10.7 million for the programs that are listed in the CIFA at the back of the audited financial statements. We issued two additional reports related to the single audit. One did have a significant deficiency that Ashley will talk a little bit about when she gets to the management letter. And we did not have any findings related to compliance and issued an unmodified opinion on compliance related to the major federal programs that we tested as part of the single audit. So overall, two very clean reports coming out of the single audit, just one significant deficiency related more to financial reporting that Ashley will discuss later. All right, I will start with the auditor's communication letter. So this letter consists of comments about our audit process and its results that we are required to communicate to you. So again, just hitting the highlights, we noted no transactions that we considered both unusual and significant. There were two new accounting standards this year that the county implemented. The first was GASB statement 100 on accounting changes and error corrections. So this just changed the formatting of those accounting adopt, sorry, error corrections. And then there was also GASB 101 on compensated absences, which did change the measurement of certain liabilities for the county. There is one new statement, GASB statement 102 on certain risk disclosures that will be effective for the county during the 2025 year. So we'll work with the county during next year's audit to get that implemented. We evaluated the estimates affecting the financial statements and found them to be reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. We found the accounting records to be in good order. We did propose a few adjustments as a result of our audit procedures. We had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues and felt that we received full cooperation from the county staff. And thanks to Mark and Debbie, and then we kept you busy for a while. So we appreciate it. The next letter is the management letter. So this is used to communicate any findings that we may have about the county's internal controls and other matters that we think are significant enough to warrant your attention. So the scope of our engagement is not directed towards an opinion on internal control, but we do consider internal control as a basis for designing our audit procedures. During our audit, we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control. But as Amanda mentioned, we did identify one deficiency related to the circuit clerk's bank reconciliations not being completed timely. So we just recommend that they continue to work and get caught up on those monthly bank recs. This letter does also contain some other recommendations for your consideration. There really have been no changes to those recommendations from last year. So. Any questions on either of those two letters? Well, thank you all for your time this morning. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. I took this around. It's the financial statement that is required by the county to publish in the paper and then send to the auditor. So you guys are on that. So I just wanted to put that on record.
I know we left them out already, but the significant deficiency for the circuit clerk's office. Are we gonna have them come in and address that?
We, I think we have a response in there. My understanding is they, they're visiting with ASCA, Office of State Court Administrators, to, to bring those up to date. They are quite behind, I think, with the change in the office two years ago. The person that did that left employment. Where I have a little bit of rub with the whole thing is it's not our problem. It is the county cer, I'm sure, not the county, the circuit clerk. But they, they sort of drag it in, drag us in there, but we really have nothing to do with that. It's between a state office and the state courts.
That's kind of where I was at with that, too. That shouldn't even, shouldn't be part of our audit. But at the same time, my understanding is that they've got their reconciliations done. He's just not reconciled it with when he came into office because they won't do an audit from before that to make sure those numbers are right. So I didn't know if that had been related to the auditors. I know they already left, but that's... One thing is they said they can't get somebody hired to do it. We're gonna have to talk to ASCA, like you said, and try to get somebody. So I'll bring this up later on and see if something's being addressed and that it's not an issue on the next audit.
And sorry, traditionally, we'll send those management comments out to the departments that are of concern and let them, you know, comment back or see where they are in the process. So I'm thinking you guys on the email.
I know the presiding circuit judge is also aware of this, and he's been, I was in discussion with him. They, they're, they say they're gonna work on a plan to use some court money to bring somebody in to help them get caught up. So, I mean, I agree. It's not, it's mostly state money, but the circuit clerk is a county-elected official. His accounts get included in the county's overall funding statements. So that's why, that's why it shows up in our audit.
Sounds like they, they know.
We have no control.
Right, they know what's going on. So they said they got a plan to address it. So hopefully. Tell me if it's an MOE, we'll send them a letter. If it's an MOE, send that they'll be in compliance by this time next year.
I mean, don't we get that or like that?
The circuit clerk resides in the eastern part of the county. So it sounds like you're.
I got to ask him about it. Like I said, he said that they reconciled it every time.
Circuit clerk, I misspoke, the circuit clerk.
I think they both do so.
They don't do, that's right.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll just have to address it with them and see what that's kind of about.
Okay.
Because it is showing as significant deficiencies.
Go back to our regular agenda, and we have MU Extension Program. So Elizabeth, do you want to introduce Kathy Deacon?
Yes, I do. Um. So after my last quarterly update, Commissioner Helscher had said, you know, sometimes it would be nice to hear not just from me, but from the actual specialists and staff themselves. And so I reached out to them and said who would be interested in coming up sometime. And Kathy right away said, I would love to come. What about this date? And so Kathy is our field specialist in nutrition and health, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about what she does, the programs that she's currently running and the other kinds of programs that she offers and she has flyers that you all can have copies of or any other department heads or anything like that if you'd like. Can have it as well, so.
Again, my name is Kathy Deacon, and I have been with MU Extension a little over a year. So I apologize, I haven't been here before. I was kind of getting my feet wet and making sure I knew at least part of what I was doing. So I wanted to just let you know about some of the programs that I am offering. I cover Cole, Callaway, Miller, No Sage. And the programs that I am trained to do and have offered include chronic disease self-management, which is for anyone 18 and up with a chronic condition, which is probably most of us in this building right now. Chronic pain self-management, diabetes self-management. I also do several programs to help older adults with improving their balance and fall prevention. That's kind of the area that I've really been focused on because that's an area of interest for me. And so that includes a program called A Matter of Balance. And it also includes Tai Chi for arthritis and falls prevention. So I have done a lot of those programs in the counties that I cover. I'm also trained to do a program called Stay Strong, Stay Healthy, which is a program for older adults to introduce them to strength and resistance training. It's kind of geared towards folks who maybe haven't done that before or it's been a very long time since they have done that. And again, that is designed to not only increase their strength and improve their bone density, sarcopenia, things like that, but it also is very good for balance and fall prevention as well. So I did bring some information on the programs that I can do in Cole County. I also can do a program called Cooking Matters, which is for adults to... It focuses on all different areas around food, purchase, preservation, and cooking. So things like when you go to the store, what are you looking for? What are the best deals? How do you know it's the best deal? Can versus fro, frozen versus fresh vegetables and fruit. Easy recipes, 15-minute recipes, how to introduce your kids to new foods, vegetables, and fruits, and particularly when they're not particularly interested in that. Healthy snacks, all that kind of stuff. So that's just kind of an overview of what I do. And I did bring some flyers for two classes that are gonna be starting soon in Cole County. I just finished up a couple, and these are gonna be starting. One of them is a strength training program, the Stay Strong, Stay Healthy, and that's gonna be held at First United Methodist Church. People are registering for that now. You do not have to be a member of the church to sign up for that. And then we're also starting a pilot program. All of the programs that we do are evidence-based, which means there is lots and lots of documentation and research showing that if you teach it the way you're supposed to, you're gonna get good results. Tai Chi for Arthritis Part II just recently became recognized as an evidence-based program through National Council on Aging, CDC, and hopefully soon the State of Missouri. So we're doing a pilot program for Tai Chi for Arthritis Part II, one, one at least in every county because we would like to add to that data and be able to present a case that we think that this is gonna be a wonderful continuation for older adults to continue to improve their strength and help their balance and reduce fall risk. Yeah, I did that fast, sorry. Little nervous. And then one more thing I just wanted to let you know about if you haven't heard about this. 100 Miles, 100 Days is an initiative that's put on yearly through the Missouri Council for Activity and Nutrition. And basically, it is a self, well, 100 days in the summer. People register online. It is all free, and they keep track of about one mile a day of physical activity. So that could be like running or walking or biking, but it could also be dancing around your house or gardening or carrying five loads of laundry up and down the stairs. And they keep track of that on their own. They don't have to do it online, although they can if they like. And at the end of that, if, when they have 100 miles worth or one mile each day, either way works, then they submit, their name goes in for some prizes and other things. It's, it's kind of a best-kept secret for folks, so I did want to make sure that people knew about this. It started on June 16th, but we have until September 23rd. And it is certainly not too late to register and sign up for that.
Yeah, I just entered my miles for last week last night. Do you guys have any questions around it?
We're getting ready to retire.
Yeah, I need all of them. Is it easier if we hand out flyers? Or do you want us to just leave them here? Folks can take what they want.
Yeah, if you can just leave it there, then we'll put them in the central location.
Absolutely.
Want to have a, a healthy committee or something that tries to work on some of this, too, or something?
Yeah, we have a, a committee. And then we have the kitchen at the Health Department.
Yes.
We might be interested in having some classes there.
Love to do that.
Yeah, just, I'll pick up one of your cards.
Sure.
We talked about the prizes. They're trying to get together at the last council meeting and stuff. I told them to give away a gun or something like that to get us other nonparticipants in there or something. Y'all, y'all gonna be able to, like juicers or different?
Fit Biz.
Things like that.
Things like that, yeah.
Cool.
To try to enter, so, yeah.
So if I ride my stationary bike 20 miles a day, which is what I normally do, in five days, I could, I could.
Absolutely, you would, yes.
Whoa.
There you go. You're already doing it, so you might as well sign up. Try to win some.
There you go, yep.
My miles, I entered last week. We're cleaning out the basement and the chicken coop. So you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, you really can.
I want to see a video of Sam riding 20 miles a day.
That's what I do.
It's a good thing he's not under oath.
I, I, I know, buy my own bikes.
They do have a bicycle juicer, too. So I think you should, you could demonstrate at the next meeting, so.
I'll get Dawn to drag it, drag it up.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And we are going to have Elizabeth. Quarterly, we would welcome you to bring some of your other specialists.
Yeah, I've already got Chrissy, our livestock specialist, was on deck, and Drew Baugh, our horticulturist. I think they might come with me to my, I believe September is my next quarterly update. See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Bids and contracts. Bid award and contract signing of 2025-19 Bank Services.
We bid out the county banking services needs, and Central Bank was the only vendor who submitted a response. They had two options for their interest rates. The auditor and treasurer have recommended to go with option two, which was a 91-day Treasury Bill coupon rate minus 1.05% on the first $20 million not to fall below zero, and then 91-day Treasury Bill coupon rate minus 2% for balances over $2 million. Our recommendation is to award this to Central Bank, and we have a contract ready for signature.
I'll make a motion to sign the banking services contract number 2025-19 with Central Trust Bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I'd ask for approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Motion to approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval and signing of Air Service Guarantee Participation Agreement. This is with COU.
Is this a renewal, a new one? What do we have here?
It's like almost a continuation. It's $25,000.
And so they, you sent a new one with updated dates.
Okay, and under paragraph three, for the purpose of providing additional funds to the fund, participant hereby agrees to contribute $25,000 to the fund. We've already done this.
In a previously received.
Got it? All right. I'll make a motion to sign the Air Services Agreement Participation with City of Columbia, or the Columbia Airport.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of RJ Shear and Associates Agreement. We have one of the associates here.
Yeah, I apologize. Randy had a family matter come up. He wasn't able to attend this morning, but he does send his regrets.
Brian, I think, I could speak for the rest of them, but I'll speak for myself. I'm very pleased with the services your firm has provided since you've been with us. We got close this last year, but, you know, we missed it by that much.
I mean, that was a curveball nobody was able to hit. That was, that one came in.
Right.
Yeah, so.
But we did our due diligence in showing up over there with the budget chair, with appropriations chair, and the senate, and.
I think we had some great conversations about establishing the need. I think we, yeah, I mean, you know, we've had a lot of other things come up. You know, Cole County, obviously, being the seat of state government, gets treated differently than other counties. And, and so, yeah, it's always important.
We weren't the only ones that lost out on that. But what was the chances of it getting back in there for next year? Okay.
I, I mean, I, I would, I'd like to tell you that I know that answer, but I'm quite certain no one does. So it's a process.
Didn't know if there was a change, 50/50?
Oh, I'd say, I mean, the fact that we got, you know, the, you know, both bodies of the House and Senate to approve it was, you know, makes it, put us in a good position going forward. But, you know, the budget conversations that folks are having are pretty in-depth right now. So not really sure how, what 2026.
You can be optimistic about it. Say, chances are one in a million. Like, so you're saying there's a chance?
Oh, I'm definitely, yeah, absolutely, there's a chance. I just don't want to prejudice it too much because I frankly don't know that we have a good outlook of what the budget going forward is gonna be yet, which some of these, there is, so.
It's heads, we're gonna get it.
It's not quite as a flip, coin flip, but it sometimes feels like that.
We won't be bashful in, in making this trek over there and asking and inquiring.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to, to sign the contract for lobbying services for Cole County Commissioners to be provided by RJ Shear and Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great job.
Thank you guys.
Great job. Okay. Discussion of floor replacement codes for the Recorder's Office.
As you guys were aware, the Recorder's Office had water damage a few weeks ago. They would like to move forward with getting the carpet replaced and treated by Surf Pro. We did receive quotes from Scruggs for the carpet replacement in the amount of $4,914.86. And then SAM code to disassemble and reassemble their cubicles down there for $3,030. And then Surf Pro to do the treatment on the floors or on the concrete for $5,937.90. So we're just kind of looking at some direction and how we want to move forward with this.
What is the treatment they're doing for?
They're treating the concrete. I don't, I don't know what kind of chemical or what they're doing on the concrete, but that was Surf Pro's recommendation, was to treat it for mold. They sent, I did forward the information to you on the 16th.
Wasn't the floor guys, don't they have a sealer they put on there?
Wasn't the floor guys, don't they have a, a sealer they put on there? Anyway, that would, even if there was mold, it would encapsulate it, stop it anyway, if there was some.
Then I don't know, I don't know what they put on it.
And that was, I was fine with the floor part and the desk part, but I was, the treatment part for, for Surf Pro.
Now, I could ask her, she did, I did forward the information that she sent to me. I looked through it, but I didn't really understand what kind of chemical they would be treating. I asked her that and she just said they would be treating it for mold and putting a sealer on it, as you said, but as far as what it is.
But I don't think that whole price on there is for that sealer. I think the sealer part, now that I look at it, is a minor part of it, because they had the air movers and dehumidifiers and stuff in there already, right?
They did, and they did check it for moisture. She said because it has the, uh, carpet has a rubber backing, that it kind of holds the moisture in. So that's why they recommend taking that, treating it for mold. We still every now and then get a, a smell, uh, but it's not, I don't smell it every day unless I'm getting used to it, I don't know. But we still get a little bit of a smell, mostly in the kitchen. But I can check and ask that question because I don't know.
I think I'm fine, I'd, if, because I was extremely high for that, but that also included the initial tear out, dehumidifiers, air movers and stuff, so.
We did run fans for two weeks and it did maybe help dry it out surface wise, but when you pull the carpet back, it's still damp. And again, they think it's because it's rubber backing, and I, I don't know, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be trapped on eighth or, dehumidifiers, if you run them for a while and try to suck it out, they're, uh, I don't know if y'all had any questions on it?
No, the fact that they've already done a bunch of stuff and maybe even the heavy lifting has, has been done, so. We don't want to take any chances with spending fourteen thousand and, and arguing about five hundred dollars of sealer or whatever it is, so.
I thought the sealer was part of it.
I'll, I'll check.
Floor quote, but, I don't know, that's in their, their prep part. I know we do that when we put it down too, because we got the hydraulic pressure for the moisture coming up on the concrete, there's different things to address, so.
I would have thought they would have included all the costs, but if you think the sealer cost is not included in that quote, I'll double check with them on that.
We can reach out to Scruggs to confirm if it is, isn't on there.
If it is on there, they don't have to do it because it'll be done already.
Okay.
Surf Pro's gonna do that, so, okay.
And I'm happy to pay for all the Recorder's Fund. I think that would qualify under what the guidelines are for me to use the, the fees for, so I wasn't sure how you wanted to go about that.
I'm fine either way, I mean, it's, wherever it's coming from, it's county money, it's county taxpayers' money one way or the other, so.
One, right.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the, um, various numbers that you, you reported. There was the SAMCO.
Scruggs.
The Scruggs and Surf Pro. Condition upon you will check out whether it's a duplicate of one charge.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
That's my motion.
All right. I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Do you have a question or?
Can I just throw out, you're building up a nice balance in that Recorder's Fund. At the end of last year, it was almost three hundred thousand, so.
Right.
You got a way you can spend some of that money on something that benefits the whole town?
I have a lot of ways to spend that money, I just try and go very conservative on it. We were getting grants on projects we're working on, and the Secretary of State's office, they are not going to be giving out any more grants. They will notify us maybe in a year from now if they will. So we have books that we have pending and, uh, to get preserved, and those books are very expensive to do that. I was counting on a twenty thousand dollar grant, which I am not going to be getting for next year. So we try to keep that, I know.
I just want to point that out in, bearing on your decision on how to pay for it.
I have no problem spending all of that money, projects we have.
Spot coming out of that fund, I'm fine with it, that doesn't matter. I mean, we need to get the plastic bubble around your office, because it seems like it's all ghost downhill.
No, I, this morning, I thought, I was gonna, I got a email early that the drain was leaking. I think it was installed improperly, it didn't drain, so I, it says all over your desk, I'm like, oh crap.
Well, I was gonna ask Jeff if you'd take a look at something, if you have time. I didn't know, because I think the restrooms are right behind our kitchen, location wise. So I didn't know if there is possibly some type of shield, something you could put, so if, because what I understand Greg saying is sometimes, uh, people come in and use the restrooms and they get water in the floor if they leave it running to prevent it from coming back into our kitchen. Is there some way to pre, something up there?
I'd have Greg look at it, would that's, part of his job to take a look at that stuff, maintenance and preventive stuff like that or to mitigate problems like that, if there's something we can do, but.
I just thought you would have a recommendation since you're, you're good with construction.
If it's, water's just gonna go downhill, that's, and then that's where you're at, is down below, so.
It didn't take much, I mean, where our kitchen is and then the back room where the scan room is, it did not travel that far just because there was a little bit of a bump. I mean, it just kept it at bay, so I thought, well, if we could do something like that on the wall side between the kitchen and the restrooms in that foyer, then maybe that would prevent.
Bathroom's down to your kitchen area and then over. If we can take a look at something.
We'll have Greg take a look at it.
Okay.
I think we have a motion in a second.
Rubber piece that you put on your drop going to keep it from, you know, water from coming in on that, it's a small dam. So, but it's also a trap asset, so it's kind of, what do you want to deal with? I'll take a look, I'll swing down there for a while, see if I have ideas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you trying to keep this moving?
Yeah, yeah. We got three closed sessions, fourth.
Two sessions.
Okay.
One of the personnel's off.
Signing of agreement with Socket for EMS department located seventeen thirty-sixth South Ridge Drive.
So, we talked about this in closed session, this has to do with the primary internet connection out at EMS on South Ridge. Um, they've been having a lot of trouble with their current connection, and, uh, this connection's gonna replace it. So the, the cost of it is nine hundred and fifty-five dollars per month. And there is an out if we, it's also a defunding, and Jill has reviewed this, this contract.
We're gonna cancel the on-line.
Yes.
So this nine fifty-five?
Yes.
replaces something that is?
Seven, um, I don't know. I've got it right here. Seven, I want to say seven, seven fifty is what I want to say.
Right, yeah, that, that rings a bell from last week's meeting.
And with Socket, we won't have the issues we have with Blue?
No, we have that same service in the Sheriff's Office, and I have zero issues with it. It's on Socket's fiber.
And one of the big issues here is the, whenever there is a break on the current operation, it can be twenty-four plus hours before it's.
So we've seen up to thirty-six hours, is that right, Chief?
Yeah, so, up, up to thirty-six hours, maybe even getting close to the forty-eight hour mark, and this is pretty mission critical stuff. Um, when that fiber cut, uh, occurs, we lose all visibility on our mobile data terminals, uh, which is what we use to relay the GPS positioning of our apparatus. Um, so when we can't see the ambulances, it gets very difficult to send the right resources to the calls. Um, and it doesn't allow us to pass information to the responding units, so it becomes a life safety issue for our responders. So, um, it is a pretty critical piece of infrastructure. Um, and, uh, over the last ninety days or so, um, there's been three plus outages with the current provider, and it's just not sustainable, so.
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement with Socket for the EMS department. It's an addendum to the telecommunications service contract.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Digital signage for the annex book.
Okay, so just recently, um, over the courthouse, we discovered there was a need to put public information display boards up in order, and over the courthouse, we use those to inform the public as they walk in as far as what activities are happening on which floor of the courthouse. And so they were doing that with a dry erase board, and I'm walking from floor to floor, updating those manually. So the question was asked, was is there a way we could digitally do that function? And this is not a new concept, this has been around for a long time, but I went through and I kind of evaluated the technologies that were out there and tried to come in at a lower cost. So I used basically a fire stick, an LED television, and, uh, some networking, and I was able to do that for a low price point. There is a recurring two hundred dollar a year annual software charge. But other than that, uh, I was able to do all that for less than three thousand dollars, so.
Where will this be?
So, so, so right now, I kind of took an informal poll, and we would like to put one on the High Street entrance side of the annex, uh, in the entryway there. We would like to put one on the second floor, since there's so much that's happening here with the senior tax freeze, with the clerk's office, with the commission office. And then also, we'd like to put one on the, the back parking lot entrance as well. So what I did was I went through and I got a quote from Meyer Electric, since we have them on contract, uh, to do the, the electrical and the, uh, data runs, and they want two thousand, uh, two thousand sixty-six dollars to do that. Uh, my estimate is for the three televisions is, should be pretty close to three hundred and fifty-four dollars. And the fire sticks are a hundred and fifty dollars for three of them. And like I said, the annual, uh, software is two hundred and seventeen dollars, so that should be a grand total of two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars to do this project.
Who's the king or the queen of the, uh, control here?
So IT will be one of those folks, uh, and then it's whomever currently does the update to like the commission board out in on the second floor, and then also whatever activities we're having going on. So I would, I mean, I would say that, that Debbie Mollster would be the queen.
Even if she retires, yeah.
This, this is, this is really a, uh, an annex building informational board, so. Uh, you could, yeah, it depends on what, what use case you can. So like right now, um, we go through and like within the software, you can create templates, and you just update the template to say what's going on during that day. So it's really, uh, it's really, really straightforward.
Is it visible from the street at the entrances, even if the building's closed?
Well, the mount, the mounts that I, I quoted have swivel, have a, are a swivel mount, so if you wanted to get that towards the front, you could.
Will all four screens be saying the same thing?
Uh, there's three.
I'm sorry, three?
Yeah, three.
Okay, three.
Uh, you can have them say the same things, or you could have them say something different. I, I assume they would be the same, but.
Can you tell the seniors that are coming in here on Monday to come back at ten o'clock on Wednesday?
Yeah, this, the idea is to replace all the paper signs that are being placed around.
Okay, that would clean it up a little bit.
Some, yeah.
It's kind of why I said it's perfect timing to be asking to do this, because signs everywhere.
I know.
Was that song, you know?
Right. Here's your sign.
And honestly, the, the price tag on it was less, a lot less than I actually thought it was gonna be, so, nice job, Brian.
Yeah.
I'll make it somewhere else.
Oh, no, no. You already have. So, you just need our blessing on getting it going.
Yes, yeah, I just.
So, yeah.
Just get your signature on the quote from Meyer Electric to get me.
Turn away, put it like just for big time at the time, right here.
Don't scare people off, that's all. Down when we go to the no man. Uh, I'll just go ahead and make a, a motion to proceed with the digital signage for the annex building as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, approval and signing of preventative maintenance contract with Renew Biomedical.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is a, uh, present, preventative maintenance contract, uh, to do the annual preventative maintenance on our IV infusion pumps. We have thirty-two of them, uh, and the rate for the preventative maintenance is sixty-five dollars per, uh, unit. There's also a fourteen hundred dollar, uh, travel fee, um, for the tech. And this is important because, um, we don't have enough to ship them off to get serviced. If we were to do that, we wouldn't have, um, we would have apparatus without the devices, so. Um, they've done this the last three years for us, um, and it's worked out really well onsite, so I just ask that, uh, this be approved today so we can go ahead and get that scheduled, and it is in, uh, a budget for this year.
I'll make a motion to sign the preventive maintenance contract quote with Renew Biomedical for EMS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval and signing of preventative maintenance contract with Hamilton Medical.
Yeah, so a little bit of a backstory on this, I'll do my best to kind of keep it straight. Uh, so in previous years, we've utilized Renew Biomedical, uh, which is the company that you just signed that agreement for, to also service our, uh, invasive ventilators, uh, that, that help our folks, uh, breathe when we have to do, uh, invasive airway procedures on, on our patients. Um, they've come onsite and done that in the past. However, when we approached them this year to get it scheduled, they informed us that the manufacturer has canceled all their third parties, third-party servicing contracts and moved, uh, to do that in-house. So, um, we did reach out with the, to the manufacturer of our ventilators, uh, Hamilton Medical. Um, they have a new, uh, service contract program, um, in which, uh, we had a bunch of different options to kind of choose from, we kind of picked, um, on, on the lower end of that package. But what it does allow, um, us to do is have them come onsite, they replace all of the, uh, they do the preventative maintenance, and then they will replace all of the, um, mechanical parts that need to be replaced under the service contract. This includes batteries and, and all those sorts of things. Um, so for perspective, you know, a battery for a ventilator is about five hundred dollars. Um, if we were to ship that off, uh, to Hamilton to have it serviced, it costs us five hundred dollars in shipping alone. So if you're looking for a battery change, you're looking at about a thousand dollar hit. So all of that will be included in the maintenance contract price, um, and I do believe that we will, uh, save money over the long run. So adding on to that a little bit, um, when we discussed this with Hamilton, um, they did offer some, um, discounts for, uh, entering into a prolonged contract. Um, so they proposed a five-year service agreement billed in five annual installments. And that dropped, uh, twenty percent off of the, the list price. So, um, for this year, eh, well, what I will ask is that we sign the preventative maintenance service agreement for sixty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars to be billed in five annual installments of thirteen thousand dollars and some change. So just a little bit over what we had budgeted this year, and we'll adjust that in future years. One of the, one of the issues that we discovered, since this is a relatively new program, um, our ventilators were bought off of cooperative purchase. Um, this service agreement has not been added to that cooperative, uh, procurement contract yet, which really, in order for us to comply with county, county purchasing policies, we have to bid it as a sole source. And I am one hundred percent confident that this is a sole source item. However, the county sole source process takes about ten days to complete, um, and then we'd have to get it onto another agenda, so we're looking at a, a two-week delay. In researching other ways to, to do this, because maintenance is due on those ventilators, they are life safety equipment. State statute does allow us to make this under emergency purchase because it does have a. State statute does allow us to make this under emergency purchase because it does have a direct impact on life safety. So I'm happy to produce that written statement declaring it as such. I discussed this with Jill and she's in agreement. So to allow us to get this service agreement signed today, get them onsite, get our ventilators PM'd and make sure they're in good working order, I would ask that we approve this as an emergency purchase. Happy to answer your questions.
I can get with that as well. Before now, we were talking about it earlier and it should actually save us some money because they're not having to. Other people that were doing the maintenance buy the parts from this company and upcharge them and put them on higher equipment, so.
Yeah, so, so one of the things when, when Renew would come onsite, they would do the preventative maintenance. They would go through, test the ventilator, do any software upgrades, but if they found any broken components or, you know, needed any servicing to the actual machine, they would perform that. We'd have to pack it up and send it to Hamilton and then pay for the parts and so on and so forth. So in the long run, over the course of five years, as those, as that technology ages, this will definitely probably save us some money, if not significant amounts, by having an all-inclusive contract.
So when you're gonna do the statement?
Yep.
Emergency or whoever's gonna sign it, whatever we need for that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do we do this in one big beautiful motion or?
Need to make motion to approve emergency purchase and sign the agreement.
Yeah, so, so, uh, to, to, like any multi-year contract, there is an appropriations clause in the contract. So it does not bind us for future years if it's not appropriated in the budget, so.
And, and the, the fact that we call it emergency, does that override any sole source requirement that we have to still publish or not?
We don't have to publish the sole source.
Okay, fine, all right. I will make a motion to sign the contract with Hammond, Hamilton Medical under an emergency clause and proceed with a five-year contract of sixty-five thousand seven eighty to be billed in annual five, one-year installments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Approval and signing of amendment number two with Leon Uniform, Uniform Company for the Sheriff's Department.
Leon Uniform Company currently holds a contract for the Sheriff's Department uniforms. They have two items that are now discontinued and so we're just taking those two items off and adding two new ones on there. It actually went down in price. The old price was eighty-four dollars and this new style ranges from anywhere from seventy-five to eighty-three dollars. So we just need a signing of the amendment today.
Just curious, what dropped off? What was?
Pants, right there.
Yeah.
Pants. They're getting larger sizes or something like that, is that what's going on here?
Maybe for me.
Just?
You know, he's not here to defend himself, but I would be challenged to make a comment about his silly plastic badges as well, too.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, sign amendment number two of Leon Uniform Company for the Sheriff's Office.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval and signing of MODHSS contract for continued participation in the Show Me Health Women Program.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a annual contract that we have with DHSS for the Show Me Healthy Women. You know, we do the screening and, and make sure that women who qualify get the proper cancer screening services. DHSS reimburses us for those, for those services.
Make a motion to approve and sign the MODHSS contract for continued participation in the Show Me Healthy Women Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of desktop placement for the Pringer Family Center.
Or I'll just retire, like Debbie. I have, um, we have, um, through our federal grant, we are looking to purchase, replace all the desktops in our offices. They've all reached their ex, uh, warranty, has expired on them this year. We have a quote of twenty-one thousand eighty-five dollars and ninety-four cents to replace twenty-three desktops and the hardware that goes with them.
They kind of take care of their own, don't they, Brian?
Yeah, um, Oscar actually takes care of the support of them and then they got a grant to pay for the.
So she could just sell this in your lab and say, hey, Brian.
Right.
Their grant.
I didn't know it worked that way.
You got a contractor or anything, we're just gonna make it, approve it, so. I'll make a motion to approve the desktop replacement for the Pringer Center and the grant for twenty-one thousand eighty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unfinished business. Amendment to the ordinance for the senior property program, tax freeze program. And this is basically just changing the date of our receiving application.
The original program had the June thirty, it's like Friday, Tuesday and the collector put the deadline this year at July thirty-one. So this just changes it to July thirty-one for twenty twenty-five. It leaves it at June thirtieth for subsequent years, which is very odd.
Good work.
We didn't start as soon as we anticipated because the auditor needed the conference room, the commission chambers.
Those audits.
The outside.
Yeah.
We're not distinguishing which auditor.
Well, since I've treated this program like kryptonite to Superman, so I'm gonna let you have it.
Motion to approve the amendment to the ordinance for the senior property tax freeze program.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to stay here.
No. I'm just being consistent.
Okay, we have breezed through this.
I do have one more unfinished business thing I'd like to see if we can get an update on. We had the onsite wastewater treatment thing up in Russellville. We made it anywhere with that or is that?
I missed the last meeting, which was last week and the two parties were, the latest I heard, there was a solution proposed. One of the two parties didn't like it and it's either.
That's kind of what I was wondering, because it came up at the Russellville ribbon cutting at their playground and then we had communities there, so I had time to discuss with them and I also discussed it with Joe. So I didn't know if we need to get it on the agenda, if anything's moving forward on that or where. It's just, it's still sitting out there, so I didn't know where we were at, just kind of wanted to update.
We can add it to the agenda next week.
Okay.
If we need to, that's why I'm just asking what the status is. It's unfinished business, it's, it wasn't completed in the meetings prior to, so there's no reason why we can't ask about it. I'm not asking any action in particular, I'm just asking about it, where we're at with it. So if we can get it on the agenda, let Jill know if we can do what we need to do or.
Yeah, I'm not sure putting it on the agenda is gonna make the parties agree faster.
Well, it, it won't, but, but let's put it on the agenda for next week and, and invite the parties and have someone from your office.
Yes. Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to go on closed session.
Pursuant to section six ten point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Computer systems under section six ten point zero two one subsection twenty-two. Security, section six ten point zero two one subsection twenty.
And this is, and putting that under twenty-two, so.
Just leave that off.
Just leave it twenty, yes.
Personnel under section six ten point zero two one, I'm sorry, six ten point zero two, that should be a one there, shouldn't it? Subsection thirteen.
Second.
Roll call please.
Sam.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes. Hey, Brian, when we meet Holly, we just need to text her, mother, no.
Yeah.
I told her she didn't have to sit here though. I didn't know how long that was gonna take, there was a.